Nobody heard that.
I'll call me in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Everyone looks frozen.
As you are.
Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Mayor, it's you. You're completely frozen.
Are you connected via? Meeting of the Seward Nebraska.
Oh, he's going. We're gonna get an echo.
Am I?
You got quite the strange face.
No, I use the mic.
Josh.
Yeah.
Alright, I think you're getting better. Are you on the wifi here?
I thought I was on my cell.
You should connect to the wifi. It's a public wifi here.
Okay. Let me try this. Is this better? Can you hear me now?
I think we have you.
How about now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, maybe I was in a dungeon. This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska means act in conducting business copy of the Nebraska open means act is displayed in the basement of the civic center as required. There's also disclosure for recording this event, this meeting. See here. Do you wish to speak tonight? Just message Greg Butcher directly. He will call on you at the appropriate time. You are asked to say your name and address for the clutch record and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, which will determine by him. Any appropriate response shall be made. The city reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary. They may elect to take action in the items listed. Please call the roll.
Campereth.
Here.
Coulterman.
Here.
Wilken.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
And Hendricks. Don't see Councilmember Hendricks online at the moment. Seven members present.
Alright. First item this evening is the draft minutes for January 19th, 2021. Move to approve.
Okay.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Coulterman.
A motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Campereth.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Alright, the next two items consist of our consent agenda for this evening.
Approve.
Second.
Moved by Beck, second by Campereth.
Give a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Campereth.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Alright, next we have the reappointment of Diane Hill and Sally Manzer and the appointment of Julie Cox to replace James Varney to the Seward Aging Services Commission for a two-year term. Move to approve.
Okay.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Coulterman.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Campereth.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Alright, next we have a request by Seward Public Schools for assistance in removing elementary school playground.
I thought Dr. Fields was gonna join us. But I do not see him online. Dr. Fields, if you are online somewhere, I don't see you, go ahead and message me. Otherwise, I will carry this one. I received a request from Seward Public Schools, and many of you know, they're going in to redevelop the elementary school playground as part of a planning process and a fundraiser they've been working on for a little over a year now. Looking to install more ADA compliant playground, I believe basically all the equipment at the current site will be removed. New matting will be laid down. Most of the playground currently doesn't have any matting. It's all mulched for the most part. There's a little bit. I think things like maybe the spider web. I don't know how to describe it. The thing that I always worried my kid gonna fall off of. I think some of those elements may stay, but the main playset, I think, has worked through its useful life. And that playset is probably, if I were to talk to Bob Core or any of us residents that live up there that, you know, run around or drive by it on a regular basis when school's not in session, that may be the most utilized playground in the entire city. And the school has it open for everyone to play on and enjoy, whether you live in Seward or pay taxes here in the school district or not, or whether you're a student there or not. And so, they were looking for a little bit of assistance in getting started on that project. What they requested from the city is to see if we could assist through our public properties and street department in removing the old playground. Essentially, we have the cranes, the lifts, and the loaders to be able to remove that efficiently without them having to hire contractors. They don't need to save it or utilize it. We would not recommend doing that, just in the nature of the age of it. And so, it wouldn't be utilized at any other park or anything like that at this point anyways. And so, we can pretty efficiently, when checking with Bob Core and Bob Myers, we can probably get in there very quickly, help assist in that project, remove it. We can have, we have the dump trucks to take it off-site. We can deposit at the landfill down in Milford, and then they would cover the tipping fees and everything as part of the project. But we can utilize some of our manned and equipment hours to help them out. That was the request. Again, I don't know if Dr. Fields made it on with us tonight, or if something else grabbed him, but that was our discussion. Like I said, this is a community benefit to all of us, especially us with kids that go up there and play on that during all school hours. And so, that was the ask that they were gonna make. So I think it would be appropriate, if somebody were to entertain us, to just make a motion to help assist in doing that. But I can answer any questions you have.
I'll make a motion that we assist in helping them do that.
Second.
Moved by Coulterman, second by Campereth.
Do a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Campereth.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Alright, next we have a presentation and acceptance of Seward Memorial Library's annual report. Welcome, Becky Baker.
Hello. You should have all received something that looks like this. The first three pages contain the information that by state statute, we are supposed to share annually with you all. And the fourth page highlights just a couple of the bigger things that happened during the year, the electronic sign and silhouette lights, for instance. Year was awful, as we all know, with not a lot of things happening. So we didn't go into the detail that we usually do, because we just didn't have the detail to share. I'm happy to answer any questions, and obviously, I can't hand you your candy that I usually do. If you, in the past, have gotten candy, you can drive up to our drive-up window and say, "I need candy," and we will get you your candy.
Becky, you guys have done a great job in pivoting and trying to find ways to connect with the citizens and assist them as they've been at home. You know, so thank you to you and your team for everything you guys have done.
I will pass that along. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Coulterman. Becky and her whole staff have worked probably the hardest they've worked since I've been here in this past year. When COVID first hit, that drive-through, once we closed the facility, looked like a McDonald's drive-through. I think people were so concerned that they were literally stuck at home. We were really shut down at that point, trying to figure out how this was gonna play out. And she served an incredible need in our community for literature, entertainment, and things. You know, when the kids are home from school, parents are like, "I need DVDs and books and games and stuff." And so, they were there to serve that need and were really critical. We've also had some struggles with personnel, with just, along with COVID, for everybody that we're all dealing with, just personnel issues in regards to health issues and other things that have made scheduling a real challenge and a balancing act when we care so much about our employees that work there. And so, kudos to her and her staff for the extra hours they put in, and the things that they go above and beyond to do to try to keep that facility open for the benefit of the city.
Thank you.
Those are the other questions or comments? Would someone like to make a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wilken, second by Schmidt.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Campereth.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Alright, next we have a request by Levi Bull at 632 North Sixth Street to review city ordinance regarding fowl in the city limits, requesting to remove the requirement for neighbor consent. Greg, did you wanna kick this off and then send over?
We'll try. No, this is one we're having a little bit of a technical difficulty, so see if, can you, we see if we can hear you. I have you unmuted right now. I still have nothing. So check on your microphone. This request came in, as you know, try to get some background. Just keep talking until we, if I hear you, jump in, then I'll segue to you, but I'll try to give this as much of an intro as I can. So see if you can adjust the rate. I don't know if you're on a computer or an iPad. You can also call in, yes. So if you want to check the phone number, there's a way to call. Are you on the phone? You did, oh, look at that. That's what it is. Hold on a second. I got a few different, is it a 712 area code? No.
Greg, does he have to do star six, so he unmutes himself?
Try that. Try star six on your phone. Nothing? I only have two phone numbers, and one is Councilmember Singleton, and then I have a 712 area code.
I think he's just using Zoom from his phone, right, Levi?
No, his audio's connecting.
Oh, there we go.
Maybe.
Joys of Zoom. I'll kind of, and if we get interrupted, then I'll segue over. Essentially, as you remember, we adjusted our animal ordinances, oh, a year or two ago, in regards to trying to allow for lessened restrictions in regards to the keeping of fowl at that time. That includes, I think we actually went specific with chickens in reviewing our most recent update. But we relinquished some of the depths and distances on some of those, and then we increased the number that were allowed. Originally, you had to go 200 feet in all directions from the property line to get approval from your neighbors. Ultimately, one of the issues with that is you get approval from the property owner, not the tenant, or both. And so, we reduced that down. That significantly reduced the burden on those interested in having chickens or fowl in town. But as it's stated, and the way that we check it, is basically, we just kinda look at the perimeter of a property, and we go out 75 feet on GIS and try to determine who all was there, and then make sure that they have all those people signed up. The unfortunate part for that, if you're a chicken lover or enjoyed ducks or other fowl, is that if you got one neighbor in that 75-foot radius that doesn't want it, then we don't approve it. And so, I think that's kind of one of the main reasons for the request. I don't mean to put too much more into it for Levi to steal any thunder. But the request was to remove that distance requirement, and essentially, just make it a blanket authority, potentially.
Greg, is that a requirement or something for consideration when approving a permit?
No, it's a requirement. The 75 feet and the approval of the neighbor, the resident, is required.
And the way the ordinance is written, it applies to fowl, livestock, hoofed, exotic, or wild animals. It's not specific just to fowl.
Nope. Yeah, it's kind of an exotic or farm animal one. It kinda catches both, but non-traditional domestic animals.
But I think, if I could, to interject, I think part of the reason we have such broad categories is the alternative is just to start listing animals that you would or would not, and that can be exhausting to try and come up with a list for that. And so, you know, we've had, we've had an officer, you know, see an alligator in the back of a vehicle before in Seward, and once they found out that the person lived in Seward, was informed that the alligator needed to have a permit. You know, or if it's, you know, certain, you know, certain types of animals that were already listed. So that, I mean, you can obviously make a list of animals that count and don't count. It's just, that becomes a challenge in and of itself, and you might find yourself being asked, you know, to add an animal or take an animal off that list from time to time. So having these broader categories, it may, may not be as tailored as someone might like for an ordinance, but that's, that's the reason why we have those categories.
And Greg, just to clarify, this, this request is to remove the, basically, the consent of the neighbor within the 75 feet. Is that right?
And again, we don't have a draft ordinance ready yet, and that's why I was really hoping that we could get this audio issue fixed for Levi. So they could better explain the specifics, because it may be just for fowl. It may not be for the alligators and the cattle and all the others kind of stuff. The intent, I think, initially is to have, from the personal perspective, from what I know, was to have ducks. And so, you guys can kind of slice it however you want. And if you wanted, I mean, we have different restrictions for the number of chickens you can have versus the number of cows or other items. I think chickens have become relatively the new domestic thing to do for some people. And so, I don't think you need, if you wanted to cut it and just say that for chickens and fowl, you don't have to have the neighbor permission, but you do for cattle and hoofed animals and other things, you could do it. I mean, we can kind of cut it up however you want.
But that first time, Sid, your neighbor gets a rooster? And wakes you up at 5:00 in the morning?
Roosters are prohibited under the ordinance.
Alright.
I'm kidding.
Yeah, we already, we already covered that one. And I might need to get some technical assistance.
Anytime.
Levi here. One of the other things you can do, Levi, is just call in. Just see if they want ducks. Look at that. Ducks.
Yeah, I mean, if we all read.
Here's what I wanna do, because it's really important that we hear from the citizen that requested. Levi, do you have the phone number to call in? Just the phone number and not the Zoom link. I don't know if he's listening, Gus.
No, he's saying no, he doesn't.
It's on the agenda.
You couldn't, you could give it to him.
It's on the agenda. I sent him the agenda, so if he just looks at the agenda, the phone number is on there. There are two options.
Whatever link that they, that he clicked on to the, should also have the phone number on that agenda. And so, just hang up the Zoom meeting, and then just call that number like you're calling a friend, just like a normal phone call. And then you'll pop up, and we'll just have your audio. We won't get to see your, your face, but we'll have the audio. Or use a friend's phone. Somebody, somebody else has a cellphone in the house, grab that phone and call in for audio, and then we'll see you on the video here. The joys of teleconferencing. Does, in the meantime, do any of the council members have any questions about the status of the current ordinance and how we enforce it, what goes on?
Do you have any sense of how many people do have fowl in town?
Oh, Bonnie, correct me if I'm wrong. It may be five permits. It's not a lot.
I don't know. I know you approved them, but I, and I don't know. Sometimes I think people get a permit, and then they kind of get tired of it, but they don't, you know, come back and tell us they don't have them anymore, so.
I'd go with like five, maybe less. I think I've looked at and approved three myself, and obviously, you had the ordinance in place before my arrival, so there could be a few others that were floating around in there, but not too many.
So Greg, for those five sub-criteria on Section B, do those all have to be met before you would issue a permit?
Number one, yes. Number two is the applicant must provide proof that there are no objections from property owners. That would be a yes, 75 feet. Number three is the applicant must provide a description of the type of enclosure for confinement. Usually, we want to know if they're gonna do a fully enclosed coop or a coop that's just chicken wire, you know. Again, we're also talking about other animals, so they may be, I haven't had anybody give me a horse application or a cow or a pig, but, you know, we want to know what kind of confinement they are, so that it's appropriate for what the animal is. After the issuance of the permit, must continue to comply with that. The only thing with number four is that we might check up on these or audit them every once in a while, because there's so few of them, that we may send out the animal control community service officer to just go check, or if we have any complaints. And then the last one, the applicant must provide a certificate from a licensed veterinarian, verify that the animal has no health problems, adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare. That's probably for larger animals, that you would need veterinary services on the reg. Usually, with things like chickens and things like that, you wouldn't need it, but for horses, hoofed animals, things like that, you might wanna have a veterinary verification.
So all those are not necessarily applicable at one time, correct?
It would be dependent on what you had. Again, for some, I think in this case, and I have a phone that got added here, I think, so I'm gonna try it real quick. And if you did just jump on to, there we go.
Hey, guys.
Hello.
Hi.
There we go.
This is Levi.
Levi, can you identify name and address, just real quick?
Levi Bull, 632 North Sixth Street.
There you go. Go ahead and start with the whole story of why you made this request, and then we'll go from there.
Well, the biggest part that I want is, I'm not looking like city ordinance says about 10. I'm only looking about to get two to three, and they're about the size of mallards or Indian runners. They're not real big ducks. But the reason I brought it up is I don't see why I need my neighbor's permission, when they don't need my permission to get their dogs and cats and all those kind of animals that can get loose, and if they're provoked or anything, they can harm the safety of others or damage their property. If I keep them in my property, and, you know, I'll buy or build a chicken coop kind of thing for them, I don't see why I need to get their permission for it. If that makes sense.
Levi, did you have a neighbor, did you talk to the neighbors and see if they would be willing?
No, none of us over here really talk to each other.
So you've not, you've not reached out?
No.
Okay.
I have not, no. Nope. They've just got big dogs that are constantly barking, so I don't see why two little ducks would need a permission versus two labs that are always barking at people and jumping at fences.
Is that, is the reason that you haven't talked to them is just based on principle? Because obviously, if you, if you got their, their consent on a form, the issue, as far as you are concerned, goes away.
Yeah, no, I didn't get permission just because I have to go to every single one of them, and nobody really knows who I am around here, and nobody really talks to each other. But I didn't want to go through and get everybody's yes, and then that one person, they know.
So Greg, just property-wise, do you know how many neighbors those would be?
I don't. Just guessing by where I live, probably.
About eight people.
Yeah, you're probably looking about eight. It's probably two on each side due to the width of the lots, potentially, two or three across the roadway, and then probably two or three behind. So that gets you between eight and nine. And again, maybe it's, maybe it's another reconsideration of, of maybe we just start looking at adjacent property owners and try to relieve, you know, the burden a little bit more. I don't know. I'm just throwing out ideas or what's reasonable.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's what I was gonna bring up, Greg, is do we just go to adjacent properties?
We could. That would be an easy write-in.
Is Kelly?
Kelly's odd. He's, he's, he's pontificating.
Does he have any comments?
He's on mute. You might have to unmute him.
I asked him to unmute.
There he is.
You can do what you want. This chicken ordinance was very well thought out. There was lots of research. We modeled it after several different municipalities. You guys can do what you want. You can amend your ordinance and direct me to bring an amended ordinance back, but there was some careful thought put into this ordinance, and, you know, I think the reason for it is that this isn't a traditional domesticated animal, and there's, you know, health and sanitation issues, and, and lots of things that go with having a non-traditional domestic animal, so.
And I would echo that. That's probably the biggest concern, is that we also have to remember, like, you know, if you want a giant pot-bellied pig or a horse in town, or something like that, under this ordinance, the more you, you reduce the restrictions on all those other ones, then you open yourself up to, I don't, I don't know, I don't remember the name of your horse, Kelly, down there in Hickman. Peter Rabbit, yes. You opened yourself up to Peter Rabbit hanging out in town, and then once Peter Rabbit's here, we can't get rid of Peter Rabbit until Peter Rabbit passes away. So I understand there's both perspectives. It's just with the way you drafted it all, so that we have to understand that maybe having a few mallards running around in a yard, not doing too much, isn't a big year deal, but having two Peter Rabbits standing in that same yard might be a problem for some people. So.
If the council wants to go in that direction, you know, then, then maybe you want to make it more specific than, than broad, just to make sure there aren't any unintended consequences for animals showing up that you weren't thinking about. So, you know, rather than just say all fowl, maybe it's specifically, you know, ducks or something along those lines, if that's the direction you want to go. you know, ducks or or something along those lines, if that's the direction you want to go. We can always revisit it later if there are other animals. It'd be harder, like you said, once you have Peter Rabbit, it's very hard to get rid of Peter Rabbit. If you decide that that wasn't what you wanted in town to echo Greg's point.
Had had Levi gone to the neighbors and they said no, I guess I'd be I'd be a little more inclined, but that's what our ordinance states. And I feel Levi, you should just go and make the rounds and just see what happens. You never know. And then come back and say, well, one person objected and if it's just one person and they're farther away than the others, maybe then I I guess, I don't know, I'm just having some problem with with you thumbing your nose at the ordinance because you don't like it.
I will say, you know, for better or for worse, I know a little bit about fowl. From a biosecurity standpoint, I think at the very bare minimum, you have to have permission from your immediate neighbors, the adjacent neighbors.
Yeah.
Because like in my perspective with my job, I can't be around fowl. If I'm around fowl, I can't physically go to my job. And so if you happened to be my neighbor, I'd probably have to say no, not because I don't like fowl or don't want you to have it, but just because if your bird would happen to poop on the sidewalk and I happened to step in it, I would be in violation for my job. So if you had a neighbor who worked in poultry, as an example, you might run into some problems. So just from a pure biosecurity standpoint, I would say you at least have to have the adjacent neighbors. Maybe not, you know, as as broad as it is written currently, but that that would be my only concern just from a a neighbor standpoint.
Greg, doesn't the 75 feet pretty much include just all adjacent neighbors? Isn't that kind of why we adjusted it?
No, it it hits a lot more than you think. That's.
It does go out further.
Yeah, it used to be. We had one that had twenty three under the 200. And so it was a significant reduction, but it's still, you may have somebody that lives two houses down because you don't, you know, you might have a 50 foot lot.
Sure.
Especially in the area that Levi's in, because that's a more traditional, original part of the city of Seward, you know, on the larger, you know, quarter acre areas or or things like that. May not be such a big issue, might just be the adjacent people. So then the other question we have to get in and we can get into that policy discussion because we don't have an ordinance to consider in front of us. There's also, what do you do about streets? You know, right now, the person across the street is still 75 feet away from me. Because we just go by property line. We don't go by the house itself or anything like that, or where they're locating the fowl on the property or the animal. We just go by property line and go out 75 feet in every direction and then see which ones it hits. And if it hits it, we get it. So we'd want to know if we did like just an adjacent one, is it just the ones in the back and on the sides? And if you live on, you know, the highway, we don't care what the person across the highway thinks. But that's a policy discussion for later. I think we need some direction tonight if we want to move forward with anything. I know Ellen talked about, you know, would we like to see Levi attempt to see what they can do under the current ordinance? And then if we get results back from that, then we can bring forth a new ordinance change for consideration.
I'd be on the side of with Ellen of let's go through the process the first time through. And if it's not meeting the application to get a permit, then they can have an appeal to the city council on that at that point, but I don't see any need to amend the ordinance at this point.
I feel the same way for what Ellen said.
Is that appeal in there? Is that appeal in there, Greg? Does that does that allow for us, someone to come to us with an appeal or what does that look like?
There is no appeal in it.
There is no.
It just takes it would take an ordinance change at that time, whether it's to whether it's to reduce the consent to just adjacent property owners, which was mentioned earlier, or to eliminate the consent altogether. But it would require an ordinance change.
I think Levi, I think, you know, that seems to be where we're all kind of settling is, you know, if you can go talk to the neighbors and at least, you know, get a feel and and get a sense of what this looks like. I you most likely will not have a person like me that works in poultry next door. That would be my guess.
Okay.
Can a person be allergic to ducks?
I think a person could be allergic about near anything.
Okay, that's the only other thing I could think of that would be something that you wouldn't necessarily expect that could possibly pop up. Now, this this ordinance is not perfect. I mean, we've we've kind of talked internally about making it better, but we run into some issues. For example, once you have the permit and your neighbors change, we don't require you to get new consent. You know, those kinds of of issues also pop up with this ordinance. But but from what I'm hearing, it sounds like they want Levi, we want you to at least go through the process and see what happens and then come back and let us know where things stand. And if we need to put it back on the agenda at that time to consider either a modification or a repeal, we sure could.
Okay.
All right, Levi, hey, thanks for bringing this to us. Appreciate your input. All right.
All right, thank you.
With, yep, with that, then I will go to our next item, which is the city administrator's report.
Make sure my background's correct here. Sorry. What? It worked last time. Got to do it again. My report is included in there. Obviously, the big one was snow removal, snow removal, snow removal. And we're still removing snow. They were hauling it out of town still today and cleaning up areas that we could get access to. First and foremost, I want to commend the street department, electric department and water department, public properties. Every single one of them was involved in that process for what is one of the more historic snowfalls we've had in recent memory. Lots of overtime hours and just coming in and those are really, really incredibly long days. And so those electric crew guys jumping in vehicles and helping out. If you would have saw them moving in downtown, they'd move about four feet and fill an entire dump truck full of snow to go haul off. And so that was slow going and they worked really, really diligently to try and get that stuff hauled out of town and make it safe. Because sometimes, for some reason, the public, especially on the highways, just not as forgiving and trying to get around them. And so we continued to promote safety and notifying the public that, you know, we were going to be in downtown removing snow. So avoid it if you could and use caution if you're around them. But my kudos to them for all the hours they put in on that one. That was a big, big process. And then thanks to Chief Peters this year, but thanks to the PD and the street department for following up later in the week with the vehicles that we leave out. There's technically, we have a 24 hour parking rule everywhere in the city. If you park on a city street. And you guys probably saw it. You could tell pretty quickly after a day or two, who had been sitting there longer than 24 hours. And the reason we want those moved is ultimately, it's really a safety issue. What ultimately happens is a few days later, those vehicles move finally because they do, for whatever reason, they finally get up and get them out. And then, especially when there's still snow on the ground or snowfall, you can't see as a driver, especially at night, where those big mounds of snow are, where that vehicle used to be. And then we have accidents where people run into it, damage their vehicle, go up on curbs. And so it just kind of creates an unsafe situation in the streets and we need to clear that snow out. And so the PD worked diligently with the street department to get those cleaned up and then go back out and move the snow. The two inches or inch and a half that came a few days later didn't help either. We pretty much had to go do the whole city again. So that was the big one on that. I can answer any question you have on the snowfall issues. Other than that, the only other thing that I would bring up is we continue to work on COVID related items. I was on the unified command team tonight. We look to see some increased numbers in the Four Corners Health Districts on vaccinations. I think we're going to get 200. I think this last week we're at 600 doses that were given out to the Four Corners District. I think it's going to jump up to 800 in the next week, which is good for us. I believe the city, from the city perspective, our utility workers and first responders, not EMTs, they've already gone in. But fire department and police are going to be teed up and and ready to go. I think Laura was asking to have me help coordinate that. And so they're going to get their vaccinations shortly for anyone that voluntarily signed up and wanted to do so. So we will get a good number of city employees, hopefully, through the first round of vaccination. That's kind of what I have. Anything else in my report I can answer for you? And we can go from there.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, I entertain a motion to accept his report.
Second.
I don't know who moved. Schmidt? We'll go with Schmidt. Moved second by Wilkin.
Okay, please call the roll.
Camper.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Miller. Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right. Do we have any future requests for from the council for agenda items or administrative action? Seeing none. Jonathan Jenk, upcoming events.
Thank you, Mayor. To save the dates, to remind the Seward City Council about Saturday, April 24th will be the annual Seward Cleanup Day from eight to noon. More information will be coming out about this upcoming event. And then Monday, April 26th will be the annual Seward County Chamber and Development Partnerships Annual Awards Banquet. This banquet will be held virtually in abundance of caution in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we look forward to celebrating the many accomplishments of our members in 2020 during this virtual event. That's all. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Jonathan.
Yes.
Did you apply for any money for the waste people yet or waste committee?
Yes.
I haven't seen that come through.
Yeah, hazardous wastes. I believe we did get that, but I don't have that confirmed. Councilmember Singleton, and so we will confirm that by the next meeting.
Yeah, because if you're doing anything with the the Milford dump, we decreased our payments out. So you would only get probably 25% of your your cost of what you used to get.
Yes, and I I think the the hazardous waste grant that we were seeking is through Four Corners Health Departments. So I'll confirm that and have have that answer for you by next meeting.
Just wanted to give you a heads up.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
All right, thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
The move.
The move.
By Singleton, second by Schmidt.
All right, motion and second, please call the roll.
Camper.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.